We'll start off with a moment of silence before we proceed. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start off with a moment of silence before we proceed. Okay, at this time it does not look like we have anybody that would like to sign up for public input, so we'll move to roll call. And at this time it looks like Kelly is not present, but everybody else is present. Ms. Busky, you here?
Ah, I think so.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're excited.
I am here.
Alrighty. Alrighty, then now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions with the minutes? There's no questions with the minutes. Consider a motion to approve the minutes as written. Moving forward. I got a motion to approve the minutes as written. Got a motion to have a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The opposed, nay? Alright, eyes have it. Alright Dane, you're responsible getting that last signature done and making sure Tracy gets that, please. Ms. Tracy? Think my packet got shorted. Oh. We need to fix that. Dane, can I see that? That's the other page. We did two sides and tried six of money. And that's my other side. Alrighty. So as of right now in our grant fund, we still have the 8,000 of the $10,000 that we had to submit. The fire department now has $27,501 in their account. The general fund has $227,762 in their account. The wastewater fund has $2,805. Shattered dreams, we have got that taken care of. We moved those funds to general fund. Police training, we are still working on that. All we have to do, they're still working on getting divided. Trying to figure out exactly what the state paid in and then anything after that, we'll be able to move back to the general fund. The seeking fund, $68,616, doing quite well. The water tower fund is now $59,780. For a total of $399,027. That does not include our CD of $150,000 that we have sitting over there collecting some income. Sitting over there for a rainy day. And then the fire department's savings account is $2,900. Their CD is still sitting over there at $95,000. For a total of the extra income from other than the 399 is $159,886. Is the other money we have in other accounts total. Anybody have any questions on the financials? Now guys, just a warning, we do have some several large payouts coming. We should be seeing our final on the emergency generator, which is now, they have tested. So we will now begin the fence around it, protection fence. We'll get that up and going. We've got the post set and everything. We'll finish putting the gate up around that. And then we'll have some additional well communications that we're working on. Our original guy has basically retired, went to work for Park Hill. So he's, I think he's put us in good hands with SPS, which is also the company that's working on our sirens. And I'll discuss that here in a few minutes. So we still have that last leg that we'd already approved. But now we have a new guy, we will need to get a new quote from him and we'll readdress it if it's more money than what we originally approved on those communications. And then and then we will have some expenditures on this grant that we're still wrapping up. For some upgrades. There's some meters that was a different size than we would ever know. We just assumed everybody's meter was three quarter inch. Well, go find out. Some of them's up to two inches. Those meters aren't, weren't cheap. So we will have to pay the adjusted difference for those meters. But as soon as we get that swap out bill, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, at this time I'd like to take a motion to approve. Consider a motion to approve the financials as presented. Hey Dane, make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, the eyes have it. Moving forward. Okay, the next thing we have is a presidential report from the press volunteer fire department. What you got Tracy? You can hand it to you. There you go. There you go ma'am, thank you.
A, we had a total of three, uh, three fire, four medical, zero accident. We spent $94 and off road diesel. We also are doing a run to the hill on June 28th. Don't have a whole lot on that, but we are also doing a raffle. Once again, not prepared, don't have a whole lot on that, but it is online at press volunteer fire department Facebook.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay. First thing we're gonna have is a public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on an ordinance we're gonna talk about on a permit for fireworks in town. Okay. Alright, the next thing we're gonna do is move into executive session. Mr. Lanny? Okay, pursuant to notice given in the agenda for this meeting, the council will not hold executive session under authority section 551 dot 074. It's now 6:12? June 17th and we are beginning our closed executive session.
What time, Mayor, did you know?
I did, 6:12.
6:12.
6:12 PM. Okay, we're now back in the open session. We are now reconvened, so at this time, Mr. Boss, do you mind kind of explaining the audit system and why we're not showing that right now to the community? Explain that.
Is that gonna pick up? The city has received from our city auditors, audit reports for years that include 2016, 17, and now 2018. Those reports would normally be public information and be available publicly at city hall or city website. City has such and would be available for citizens to obtain copies. Because of the fact that information contained in the audits includes references to case sensitive information regarding an pending criminal investigation. Those audits will not be made available to the public at this time. But will be at such time in the future as criminal prosecution and criminal investigation comes to, you know, comes to completion disposition. So with, with advice from me as city attorney, those audit reports are, are gonna be maintained, but not disclosed to the public at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Boss. We appreciate you very much. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the financial audits for the year 2016, 2017, 2018 as we have reviewed?
I might motion.
I got a motion? And I've got a second? All in favor to approve the financial audits for 2016, 17, and 18 as reviewed and discussed, aye? Any opposed, nay? Alright, the eyes have it. Those have been approved. Okay, the next thing we have is I'm very excited to mention McGill has been with the city to the point where he is up for a longstanding opportunity and he's open to questions from the city council. If anybody has questions for city council, I do recommend that McGill is approved to be hired full time. He is full time to be hired permanent. And that, that brings on some great opportunity for some retirement opportunities that the city will match and hopefully will grow into a great employee for the community. What question do I have from Mr. McGill? Do you love your job, McGill?
I don't have no questions for you. I hear you're working all the time, so.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I like it.
We just.
Always anywhere house though. Being like that, being a special worker.
Are you, do you ever not have something to do? The list goes on forever, doesn't it?
Yeah, you're serious.
Mr. Size Board, do you have any questions?
Well, I myself want to tell you, I appreciate everything you do because I do see you out there. And I see you working hard.
Alrighty, if that's it, do you have anything else you'd like to say? Alrighty. We greatly appreciate you, McGill. At this point, I'd like to hear a motion, consider a motion to approve McGill being a permanent employee. I got a motion. Do I have a second? I got a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
City attorney.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You too.
Alright, the next thing we have, firework display at the rodeo arena, 4th of July. I did give you guys an opportunity for an ordinance. I've heard several times, what would we do this, what would we do that? I think I hear from almost every one of you guys when we have the firework display happening. So at this point, open for discussion of the ordinance. If it's something you would like to see take place or something you don't, you have any questions, anything you want to tweak on it or any questions?
So who will be enforcing the permits?
So it'd be our code enforcement official.
I don't approve of the permit. I think, like you said, with the economy, I know five dollars ain't a lot to some people. But after you, after you spend money on fireworks, will you have that five dollars?
Well, how are you gonna, how are, so that's a great question and I understand that's why I made it five dollars. The recommendation was anywhere between 15 and 20. Especially if somebody's gonna spend that much money on fireworks, they can afford that with, with.
Not necessarily.
Let me finish.
Not necessarily. That's you, you know, you got them big deep pockets. If, if we're gonna provide a place for them to pop fireworks, I don't see why we would charge them.
Who's cleaning that up?
We just hired McGill.
Okay, so what's your recommendation to be able to control who understands and who knows how the fireworks are supposed to be done if you do not have some kind of permit to do that? Because that's the purpose of the permit to help people to understand the relationship of where are you supposed to pop and where you're not. Because if you don't have a permit, you cannot enforce. If you can't enforce, then what do we do?
You didn't have a permit last year and people went out and popped fireworks over there?
Correct, but a lot of people did it the wrong way and continue to do it, pretty much just put the middle finger up to you guys. That did not go over there. Now, remember, we're not talking about the people that does it the correct way. Unfortunately, there's always those that do not want to perform and do it in the streets and, and put the safety and risk to everybody. I just want to mention something real quick. How much rain did we just get? We got a lot of rain, didn't we? Tracy, did we not just have a fire? After all that rain on the side of the highway that we had to go, after that rain, literally, literally hours after that rain. So with this 100 degree weather, how quick is everything gonna dry out and be, and be extremely dangerous? Again, the five dollars is just a token to be able to administer. You know, we've, we've had a lot of opportunities.
Let's say that, let's say that.
Again, this is for you guys. If nobody, if nobody wants it, it's real easy, you know, not have to have much conversation. I just get a lot of questions about it, so I provided it to you.
So that is the only place that is, that they're gonna be able to.
It's, that's the only place that they've ever been able to do it because that's the safest place, but people choose to do it other place.
Yeah. They do them all over town.
And, and you know, if you guys want to say, okay, let's do that five dollars or it's five dollars for the year. Fantastic. Because it isn't about the money. It's about recording, the communication to make sure everybody knows this how it's supposed to be. Because we'll put, we'll put the ordinance out there for everybody to see. We'll get the word out, but we're not out to, we don't want to make money for ordinances. That's why having a police department when, to, to make money off of it, that ain't the right reason to have a police department. It's all about the safety with the community and the respect for your neighbor. That's what it comes down to. It ain't, it isn't about collecting the money.
But then let's not charge five dollars.
Well, how, but how, okay, then what's your?
Would you just, you, you, you put the ordinance out, you put the ordinance out and, and say that it's available over here to pop fireworks. This is where we would want you to pop these fireworks.
But then you don't have nothing to be able to charge fine or enforce it. Then we're back to where we're at now, so no, no reason to do nothing. There's already have, there's already a, there's already a state, there's already a state mandate you can't pop fireworks in town. State mandate. So we're, so.
But I just want to know why the, the five dollars though.
To be able to track communication of those.
No. Other, 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 other cities around here aren't charging?
This is Chris, I'm worried about.
Well, usually you are. You try to get your information from other communities.
Okay, so Glenda, this ain't here for, for debate.
No, that's what, that's what the city council meeting is. Yes, it is. It's, that's what it's about. We can vote.
Does anybody want to continue the conversation about the ordinance? Does anybody believe, want it? I'm, I'm open to either way. The only reason y'all have it is because at least three to four out of the, out of the council called me during, during the fireworks. So y'all have asked for it, more than once.
Well, I know the first year that we were in office.
Matter of fact, I believe you've been something up on those.
The first year that we were in office, you weren't in town 4th of July.
Okay.
We didn't have a 4th of July, we didn't have it over there. The first year that we ran off. People were popping fireworks. Wait, wait. You weren't even in town because you called me, you know, you called me that night. I was in Plainview. And, and wait, and you wanted. Because.
Because why?
You didn't have a police officer that, you had one then and he wasn't, he wasn't able to go to somebody's house and you wanted me to go. When that's not our responsibility. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You called me on the phone and said, so and so is popping fireworks.
Glenda, I'm not sure if this is your.
So and so is popping fireworks, will you go tell them to stop? I said, I will not.
Considering your moment.
Now, no, it's not my mo, it's not my moment. I'm just telling you, this is, this is a city council meeting.
But don't tell me, tell them. I don't do nothing.
You're the one that has the problem.
Okay. Do you, do you have any issues with how the fireworks are done right now? Do you want to continue the conversation?
I, I do like just having them over here and making it, and having everybody do the fireworks in one, one spot. Instead of all over town because there's fireworks going off at 2 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. So what's your idea of being able to?
I, I'm not sure. I don't know how. I don't know.
What is our ordinance right now?
We don't have one. You cannot park firefighters in the city.
Yeah, you're not supposed to.
Statewide, that's a statewide thing. And now the state doesn't, doesn't allow you to have accommodations for the 4th of July and the, the year.
So the five doll, five dollars would, would just be for us to know who is over there popping fireworks? Does that work? What you're.
And, and to make sure they understand the purpose. Hey, y'all can make it a lifetime permit. I don't care. The basic thing is all you're doing is making sure they understand, hey, this is where you gotta do it at. You don't have a permit, because if you have a permit, then you understand the rules. If you don't have a permit, how many people like, well, I didn't know. I didn't know. I bet that $10 don't do much, but it gives everybody the opportunity to. That's the only purpose of it.
Well, I know other cities don't charge for the fireworks.
Do they have a police department?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Well, we don't have that unfortunately. The only way we can, the only way we can, we can maintain and enforce is through ordinance.
Through ordinance.
We're at general law municipality, the only way we can enforce is through ordinance. Everybody wants some people to celebrate. We not want to keep people from celebrating. Matter of fact, I've taken my personal dumpsters over there for them to be able to throw the trash in there to help them. It's, it's open to the city council. I don't know if they want if that's understand. I'm not sure. The biggest deal is you gotta, I mean, you can make it a dollar. I don't, I don't care. But you have to have some kind of token to get them to understand, hey, this is the communication to make sure you understand. Or make it where they can't do it inside city limits at all and make it a state deal, then we just call in the state troopers and make them enforce it. I'm assuming that's other work.
I'm not, I can't vote, but my opinion is rodeo grounds, it keeps getting this hot. There's too much grass there. The range right next to it. I mean, I know we've done it there. We all say this, it'd be up to the volunteer fire department if they can be out there. I don't know that they can, but I still say it is a risk and that isn't on the fire department's standpoint. Last year we did have somebody that was taking a vehicle out there. I'm not for sure. It hasn't been talked about.
So how are we gonna? My, my thing is, is how are we gonna know who has permits and who don't?
It's simple. They'll have a permit, they'll show their permit.
Where will they, where will they purchase the permit?
At the city hall.
City hall.
And I'm also working on where they could purchase it online and then get a token. I have not talked to, talked to TJ about that yet, but there's a program called Doc Form, Doc Forms that lets you do some things like that. So I am looking to be able to where they can just.
Well, I think if, if all we're doing.
Gather the data.
All we're doing is making sure we know who is doing the fireworks. I think doing it at a dollar.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only purpose of, of charging anything is just to be able to to know who's out there and make sure they understand the responsibility of.
What kind of liability do you have for allowing them out there and something catch on fire?
Third. Question is, if we allow them to pop fireworks, is the city liable?
Well, we have the responsibility. Fireworks are allowed on city property. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Within the city line. Designated.
Designated.
We have, we have obligation to make that area as safe as possible. To make, you know, persons who are users that are gonna be the person who are sending the fireworks off to the, you know, adults, the people that are responsible. And to establish at some point a time, a time period, it'll be from start, start at this time to end at this time. Each of my cities struggles a little bit with the end time. But my thought is, whatever it is, we've got to be able to say that is a rational time that it should cease. It shouldn't go on all night. It should have a defined start and a defined end. We're responsible for safety and security and provide a reasonable management. If we're allowed on city property.
That would probably include providing fire crack with staff, right?
Correct.
We would have to do something to either compensate the fire department for being there during that time period.
You can expect if we're, if we have fire department personnel and equipment there, that there'd be reasonable competition. You can expect that. And to have a fire department vehicle equipped and ready to act immediately in the event of an outbreak of fire or whatever, just have somebody essential.
But how can we get fire department to be out there when they're just volunteers?
Ask them.
I know, but anyways, we're asking them to keep, to stay away from their family.
I understand, exactly.
You know, it's really hard to do something like that.
Again.
We just have to ask. I'm not saying they, I'm not saying you won't have somebody that won't. I'm saying you have to ask, but I was just wondering about my family. And what about here?
You know, if we, if we can't staff it properly and we can't have the proper equipment there for safety, fire control, we shouldn't do it. That's where liability comes.
But at that point, you don't allow it at all and enforce that part. I'd rather find a way to allow it, and that might be another thing we use that one to five dollars, whatever, to help with those individuals who choose to volunteer for that.
Well, I guess we just need to figure out if we've got fire department.
Well, we, and, and let me explain something. I think the chances are very good, we won't even need to worry about this come Fourth of July. I bet we're gonna be on a burn ban. If the weather continues the way it is now, there's a very good chance we go on a burn ban. It's gonna be dry for several days. But, but that said, we should, we should. And, I mean, we have, I have language in here that if that happens, it's canceled anyway. Revotion, a permit may be revoked by the city fire chief or code enforcement official or the county sheriff if the permit holder violates any condition of the permit, or if weather conditions, wind, drought, create an unsafe environment.
All those things are appropriate protocol.
Yep.
For what we're talking about.
Now, if you do see somebody doing a sparkler, those are legal, you can do those in town. Do not need a permit.
What we're talking about is appropriate and reasonable safety and containment of pyrotechnics.
Yeah.
May be revoked on pyrotechnics.
So we need a dollar amount and we need a time. Just in case we can.
Okay. So just, does, do you guys want to move forward on the ordinance then? And just change the, the dollar amount, Glenda?
I thought we had an ordinance, I thought we came up with one the last time.
No, all that was, was a, pretty much a resolution to allow them to break the law and world came. Because the law is, there's no, cannot, unless the city council allows. So we did a resolution to allow the city, to allow them to pump it that year. All this is simple, safety protecting, protect the majority of the citizens.
That's, I still don't think you should charge five dollars.
What about a dollar?
Yeah, even a dollar, that's, I mean, I don't care what y'all charge. It's just that it has to be something, because we're gonna have some expense on this too. And keep in mind, when you're answering to the community, there's people that's not going to, that's not gonna pop fireworks and not gonna believe that their taxpaying dollars should, should fund that. So we gotta make sure we're collecting something to offset a little bit of the cost from those that wants to participate in that.
What do y'all think down there on that end? We've been pretty vocal down here. Y'all are being too quiet on that end.
I don't know, my gut says, uh, because of liability in the city. Maybe till we know for sure that we can have, uh, fire officials present to leave it in the hands of the state law or ordinance, whatever they have, like we've done in the past. Unless we can come up with a way to know we can either by compensating the people, fire department to show up and control anything that they have.
Was the fire department there last year, right? The volunteers?
If, if anything, it might have been Lewis. Uh, I know I didn't know.
Louis was there, so was Nick, Nick was there.
Oh, the only thing I can say is we have to ask them. I, I don't know, they should, like I said, somebody should be able to, but I can't speak for them. I could ask for a quick.
Well, I'm not sure that that matters, because we can put that in here as a condition. I mean, I can put it under the revocation condition that, that we have personnel to cover that. I can add that. I don't think that's our, our issue. Dana, I want to, I want to reflect on something you said, what we've done in the past. That's a two-sided statement, because what we've done in the past is not, nothing. In the past, we passed, we passed a, uh, resolution basically to give them a, a path.
That's about three of them.
Pop fireworks inside city that under constitution allowing. So, but we've done that, but there's been some individuals that chose not to respect the time that we set out or nor didn't respect where to do them at.
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, last year they were popping them all over, over there where we live.
Yeah. So the only way you can hold somebody accountable
Law, all not, nearly.
Unfortunately, to require them to get a permit, so they know the rules. And, and, and in, any, any.
They're gonna pop them. I mean, they're, they're gonna pop them.
Yeah.
Whether they're, they're. Exactly. They will, they will, so.
If they went up permit, and then if they get a permit, they're gonna think, I can pop wherever I want because I have a permit.
Yeah, that's why they don't sign with the permit says they can do. Then maybe they have more in their cup. I'm not sure if y'all know about, uh, gun permit, concealed carry. You know, you're held under more legal, uh, law, if you have one of those versus if you don't have one. Because now you know the rules, know the law. They're gonna make them get a permit. They think, they know what they're supposed to do and not do, they signed for it.
Well, what do y'all think about the amount?
Okay, so keep, consider this. On the amount, whatever the amount is, it's gonna have to be used to compensate firefighters to choose to participate. So if we do go down to a dollar, will we have enough permits on a dollar to compensate that? Not having to make others.
I don't have a problem with five dollars per family.
And the cool thing about that, I mean, that's a good idea, whoever came up with the, the family thing. Uh, we just gotta list all adults that's gonna be in that family. Interested, or household, whatever. All, all we're looking for is accountability, that's it. Transparent accountability.
So what about the people that pay for one? And then the people that don't pay for one and continue to pop fireworks?
Well, when they pay this five dollars, we won't be looking at paying up to five hundred dollar fine.
So who's gonna enforce it?
Yes, it could be a possible citation. Look, we're not here to go give.
But I'm just, I'm, listen, I'm asking a question, who's gonna, who's gonna?
Code enforcement official.
Who is it?
Right now, it's Amber.
Amber says, she said Amber wasn't gonna be in town.
She, she won't be over there, she'll be at her house.
Let's get it straight, because she said she wasn't gonna be here in town.
Second time, yes, that question.
I'm clarifying it.
She needs to get on, clarify again.
Because, you know, they, about the fire department, she's a volunteer fire department, she wasn't gonna be in town for that. So you didn't know, but she's gonna be in town to enforce.
I think she said she won't be available, I don't think she said.
But is she gonna be available to enforce anything?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, if she's working, is she gonna be able to?
The other cities, I might put, the other cities are, are dealing with the same issue. Hell Center, our meeting earlier Tuesday, a week ago, adopted ordinance designating a place, just like we are, called a light bar that's on the other side of the interstate. Setting a time. End time is twelve midnight. And of course, what we have different there is we have a city police department, so we have readily available onsite, you know, onsite law enforcement to handle anything that, from that standpoint. But we also have volunteer fire department. And so, and they have committed to work, just like we're talking about, trying to get that kind of commitment. It would be really advisable if we had the presence of a deputy sheriff, you know, during the hours now, and, and you say, well, how do we handle that? It could be by, you know, if they're allowed to do so. If they're allowed to do private security work outside of regular hours, their law enforcement jobs. That's one way you could get a presence there.
How much are their permits?
Say it again.
How much are their, do they have a permit?
No.
Hell Center, do they have a permit and a fee for the permit?
To act in that capacity, Dan?
To pop fireworks.
In the residence.
Yes. Yes, ten dollars.
More questions? A lot, and, and when I was doing my research, a lot of recommendations was ten to twenty dollars, like I mentioned earlier. For, to make money. It's to just.
Oh, I don't think five.
Now, I mean, if, if, if you want to just get to, hey, who's gonna enforce it? I can call in a, a security person that goes around town all day long and write citations and enforce it. I tell you what I want to do.
Right, yeah.
I want to bring them, like we did with the weeds and, and, and Boeing. We're continuing to bring that to a better place every month. Is it perfect? No. Is it much better than what it's ever been before? Absolutely. And again, we did write a bunch of tickets, but we do have the ability to do that if we need. That's not the goal. The goal is to educate people to understand this is what can happen. You know, we did not write one citation for school parking, not one. Everybody has done an amazing job. Parallel parking, and I've heard great things about it.
I haven't. So I've been negative.
I've heard great things about it. So with that said, again, not one ticket has to be written. And that's always the goal. Now, we can continue to pick some apart and, you know, be negative about everything, that is, that's always an option. Or we can figure out how to, let's go ahead and set some ground rules and let's find a way to bring somebody to, in the right direction by having some kind of consequence. That's all we need.
Okay. Well, do we need a motion for this, for the amount? And a motion for the time or both together?
Let's start with, let's start with the amount.
Okay.
Okay, let's start with, let's start with amount. So, so do you want to make a motion on the amount?
And there's no magic to that. It's what's appropriate for your community, or what do you deem to be appropriate?
I'm, I make a motion, five dollars for family.
Okay, if the twelfth person lives there, it's five dollars? Five dollars per address? That these, this way you're doing it?
How do you know it's gonna be an address whenever they are gonna be at the rodeo grand?
That they got to come into. Minimum, most of them's five days ahead, I made it all the way down to two days ahead.
And, and this is just for people that are popping, if people want to go over and watch, they don't have to get a permit, okay?
They gotta be eighteen years older, because actually, the state laws, eighteen, get in order for, for firefighters anyways. And so, eighteen years or older.
For family, I don't, I don't know how that would look, what that would look like, so. There's not very many families that are just one person, but.
Yeah. Now, the cool, the, the cool thing about doing it your way, uh, which I like, is because anybody that's in that family has to, has to be listed and signed for the permit, to be able to say they know the person.
Yeah.
If you're saying for address.
Well, yeah, that's the only way you could do it, per, per address. Because there could, I mean, there could be two families living in one house.
There might be, you know.
I don't mind if there's two families living in the house, all we're looking for again is accountability.
I mean, there might, there might, there's two or three people, I mean, it's just, but that's.
What if you have family from out of town coming in though? You need to get permits for this?
Really, if they're in that outfit, that's okay. Registered that address in town.
Well, we're saying per household.
Per address.
Yes.
Per this, this by address in South Salem, that way whoever's in the household.
That's why, that's why I came back to that first household.
Yeah.
And pay them. That resonated with more than address. The idea is, who is the accountable person?
Right. Okay, do I have a motion to, uh, have the fees to five dollars per household address in city?
I make a motion.
I got a motion, do I have a second? Got a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Glenda?
Nay.
Nay? Oh. Alrighty. Thank you, anyone have to break that tie? The ayes have it, it's five dollars. Now, uh, we'll move forward on, on the time. What do y'all feel like, uh? Okay.
Thing, I, I recall that is in Hell Center, it's eight. And the idea of more about starting time was fireworks start, when it starts to get dark. And it doesn't start to get dark for about a clock.
Exactly, you have six to eleven.
And I would like to recommend a little bit longer than.
Eleven.
A little bit longer than midnight, for the fact that, uh, New Year's is twelve, that's when you celebrate. Uh, I'd like to see it either twelve thirty, one o'clock. For that reason, I don't want to go back and rewrite our ordinance for, for the date, and just make, just make it the same. What do you think about that, Glenda? The time?
New Year's Eve is till one. Go ahead and do Independence Day till one. It's on a Friday this year.
Exactly, that's my point. Yes. That way, we don't, we don't, we don't need to make it confusing or, or anything like that. I'll be okay with one? Can I get a motion to, uh, to set the time for one, one AM? What, what, what's the beginning? What's the beginning time?
Six. From six to one.
We're gonna have to have the fire department out there for that long, though.
I doubt it. People start showing up at six for the fact that.
They'll make it six.
It's seven fifty-five and there's still light out there. People wanna pop fireworks for me to start.
So, what time were you saying?
She's saying six.
Well, it says on the paper, six.
Oh, this is just a suggestive. This is just something down there for you guys to, I had to put a number down there.
Oh, okay.
All this was just a.
We need to do it early enough that people with little kids that are gonna have to go to bed, they go over there and pop some fireworks. Let's do seven.
Jane?
Well, if they've got little bitty ones, they will.
It's irresponsible.
We can, I would say eight to one.
Anything like that? Rock and roll. Remember, they're not our kids.
I thought just as an observation council, that, that the end time is a lot more important than the start.
Mm-hmm.
Because later you make it, the poor folks are out, alcohol does get consumed, things of that nature can happen. And so, containment, finally, just, it's just a fact of life. Containment of the endpoint time is, to me, the critical.
But on New Year's, really start celebrating New Year's midnight. What's your recommendation?
I wouldn't go over the midnight, but that's my observation, okay? Yeah. This is your city.
What did she say, sir?
She said one.
One. I don't remember from which one.
So, what time to begin? Into what you're gonna put on the beginning time?
Seven o'clock, seven to one.
Sound good, everybody? Okay, so can I get a motion to set the time from seven PM to one AM? On both days of New Year's Eve and the Independence Day?
I motion.
You got a motion? Do I have a second? Got a second? Nate? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Alright, the ayes have. Okay, now, anything else in there that you guys would like to see changed?
Uh, they think we need to be pretty specific. We're able to provide fire protection and they just need to have law enforcement. Basically, for those later hours.
You cannot, you cannot require law enforcement. But we cannot, we cannot require the sheriff's department to be there. You ask them. It's something you cannot require.
What about the fire department?
I agree, you can't mandate that, that county provide law enforcement services, because we don't have control over there. We can't approve something about providing private security.
Correct.
But that would be a payment that people have to pay.
That's correct.
And, and just the presence of a vehicle and, and a law enforcement officer has its own inherent. So, I, I don't, I don't see that as, as a significant expense. But I do think, think that it's important.
And, and I really like that idea. That's brought me, that's one of the ideas that now is going through my head, we'll use one of those four. So, uh, I'll be looking into that, but I would say, I'd hate for that to keep this from moving forward. I really want to have an opportunity for people to have a place to pop fire crackers. We haven't needed it in the past. But I will work on finding a security to be able to handle some of our, uh, code enforcement opportunities.
Well, do you think?
And I'll look, actually, I'll look for two. I'll look for one that can, that can do something on special days, uh, uh, one half the day and another one on the other half of the day.
Would you think Swisher County would maybe just have someone come and drive through town?
We'll definitely ask him.
You know, I mean, they would have to stay in town, but I could see that being a deterrent if they were just.
And, uh, let's be honest, Swisher County does a good job staying in town.
Yes, they do.
So, I mean, I think there was four or five beating the jaws today. So, I mean, I think they do a good job staying in town, so that's just something we'll just have to reach out and see if they'll, they'll do that. But we can't tell them they have to do that.
No, we could ask.
Yep.
Are we gonna ask the fire department to be there?
Yes. And.
I did reach out.
And, um, and again, the fire, you know, I, I did, I did leave opportunity for the fire chief, or the code enforcement official, or the sheriff to, uh, to cancel it if, let's say, conditions are there.
Yes.
And that type of condition can be whatever any of them choose is, either not enough coverage, or they're out working, or fire somewhere, or anything else. Anything else?
Are we gonna return their money, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. If it is canceled for any reason, they would have.
I guess we need to give them some kind of receipt or.
They'll, they'll have the permit.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll be registered.
That's true, okay.
And TJ, go to work on that ASAP.
If you're gonna make permits, you gotta make sure that they're not gonna be able to go make copies of them.
Oh, they'll be online. They'll, they'll come through. Because it's gonna be the same way I've thought about, uh, failed register the dog online. So I found a program that, that helps us do that. I believe it'll even take payment and all that nerds, but I'm still working on that. TJ just don't know that.
Okay.
Right, so, if nobody has any other changes or anything, uh, with the changes made, do I have a motion to approve ordinance two zero two five zero six one seven? Ordinance regulating the use of fireworks within the city limits, and requiring special permits for use on this designated holidays?
I make a motion.
I got a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, aye? Ladies?
Aye.
That's Glenda?
I'm sorry.
Sometimes you are so quiet. She had my attention, cause she was so yowled out over here, she scared me. Alrighty, anonymous, uh, the ayes have it. Okay. Um, other than that, the new bill is happening. Okay. This one has been a long time one coming. We've been talking about this issue for three years, the whole three years I've been here. Citizen cannot understand, and nor could I, they get their bill for May, and it's for the usage of March. I'm sure there was a reason why it went to that, but as technology grows and we're moving on to our electronic meters, there's a huge need to fix this. So, I came up with a proposal. Okay, so, a, a normal bill just within the limits, though you, over usage, over usage is gonna be a different animal, okay? And I would, I have an example for an over usage. So, ninety-six dollars and fifty-three cents for a bill for normal usage. My proposed, um, my proposal will be for two months. Okay? So, we would not double the mosquito. We do have a responsibility to collect on trash, cause that's a hard, that's a hard number that we pay out for that, uh, service, okay? So, we would double trash for those two months. Sewer, we will leave it, whatever the calculation for the water is, and then we'd do the same thing for the calculation of water for two months. Now, let me explain that. Again, we have a ninety-six dollar, ninety-six dollars and fifty-three cents standard water bill. Okay, ninety, seventy with tax. Okay, so, how that would look is if they used so much water in two months, they wouldn't pay overage for the water. Now, keep in mind, they're not being paid that, they're not paying the forty-one dollars for that second month. They're only paying forty-one seventy-four one month, plus what over, over overage, cause they're calculated at three thousand gallons. Okay, so let's say they used six thousand gallons. Those extra gallons are charged at two dollars and some change for three more ga, uh, three thousand more gallons, okay? So, two dollars and some change top three, six, seven, eight bucks. Okay, so that's what they would be charged on top of their water bill. So, six, six, seven, eight bucks, uh, for water, if they, if they double the water for two months. But that's still cheaper than eighty-three dollars and some change.
So is this a one-time increasement or two, two months?
This is, this is, this is combining two months into, into a one bill.
Okay.
Okay? So, senior citizens would look like this. Senior citizens' base bill before taxes, seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, for two months, if they stayed in their two thousand gallons, so in two months, they did stay inside the two thousand gallons, they'd be a hundred and two dollars, a hundred and one dollars and ninety-six cents. Let's say they go over for ga, uh, uh, they go over two thousand gallons, so they do four thousand gallons, so they pay an extra four, uh, uh, six, five bucks, six bucks, whatever, if they went over. But they're not paying twenty-five dollars. Does that make sense? We doubled the trash, cause we had to, the sewer is gonna reflect the same cost as if the water comes through, however the water comes through, and then the water be charged at two thousand gallons. Okay, let me show you a proposed bill. This is a very nice gentleman that lives over on Ripley. This is his actual bill for March and April, okay? So, March, he had high usage, his bill was a hundred fifty-two dollars. Now, keep, keep in mind, March was was higher, and then April was ninety-six. Combine those two, it's still only two hundred and forty-some dollars. That'll get down to it. Well, under the new proposal, this same number would come out to hit, his bill would be two hundred forty-nine dollars and five cents. So again, it's, it stays very, 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 very close, even for high-usage customers. It's used to paying above and beyond what their number is. Now, I will say this. I hope everybody has downloaded that program that I posted on the city's, uh, uh, Facebook page and my personal blog called My Water Advisor two point O. That will show them their usage. There's gonna be some people that realize their meter was not charging them the right usage. Their old meter. Their new meter is pretty much scientific, it is state-of-the-art, it is correct. It will sit there and watch water slush back and forth. It'll give you a credit back and forth if it's just no usage. So, the water meters now are one hundred percent accurate, and we're gonna be able to understand a lot more of what, where we need to be in the future of the real water usage the city uses. We're gonna be able to be financially responsible.
So we're just doubling up on trash, that's it?
No, actually, we're not. So we are, yeah, we're, that's the one we're doubling up on, but we're not doubling up on water, but the water could be more than one, one month, because if they use more than their allotted three thousand gallons, they use four thousand gallons, then they'd have to pay that next tier of that thousand gallons. So, yeah, so, the city is giving, the city's going much further to the middle than what we're asking them to do. But, but we just gotta be responsible with the trash, cause that's a hard number we've got to pay.
My question is only about senior citizens, how many of them can afford that? Say, some of them can barely afford the seventy-two dollars.
Well, let me, let me remind you this. When we, when we changed our rates, we didn't go up on senior citizens. Some senior citizens actually, that's taking senior citizen discount, need to look at their water bill, cause some of them need to come back in, and when we were looking at this, this is how we thought this, and go back to a regular proposal, because they're using more than two thousand gallons. Because, keep in mind, a senior citizen only has two thousand gallons versus the three thousand gallon. And once they go over, then they start leveling out a lot closer to everybody else's bill. I don't think this will be near as big a deal as, as that, but, and again, we'll have, we'll have accommodations to help somebody if they need a little bit extra time to, to, to pay that if it becomes an issue.
Mayor clarified for me, my own education, senior citizen, okay, we've got widow or widower, okay, living in a house by themselves. As opposed to senior citizen couple.
Correct.
So, how, how do we differentiate if we do it all?
It's senior citizens discounted that address.
There are se, there's a senior citizen there that is on our bill, and is the responsible person for the billing.
Correct.
That would be direct.
That's correct.
Okay.
But you can't use over two thousand gallons.
Say it again?
Yeah, but you just get charged.
Yeah.
If you use over two thousand gallons, you get charged.
So, when I came up with the new senior citizen discount, I talked to a bunch of them. And most of them said, oh, I don't even use two thousand gallons. So, two thousand gallons is where I came up with, okay, so we can give them this discount, and then if they do go over, they're still gonna be, they still won't hit the normal fitness bill. So they'd have to use pretty much four thousand gallons-ish to, to get there, because their sewer is gonna change a little bit too, to get there. So, that's how we came up with that. Now, if they wanna water the yard, well, that's, that's a privilege. That's, that's, that's outside of the realm of helping somebody out live day to day. But that's going to be.
Only for two months, right?
Well, their, their next bill, we're waiting to do the next bill. That's why nobody's got a bill.
I was gonna ask Tracy.
Yeah. That's why nobody's got a bill, because we've gotta straighten this out before. We cannot continue to build that we, like we are, with the new meters and the new system.
Everybody, so the billing would be ending on May twenty-fifth, depending on what y'all think. Billing would end May twenty-fifth, will be billed, they'll get mailed out, then the next billing will end June twenty-fifth. And then the bill would be mailed out right away, uh, beginning of the first part of the month, you know, and then so our cutoff would be like on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, depending on that, uh, and so we would be current, so when you look at your bill, you're actually looking at your current usage for that one.
What bill will this be increased?
This next, this next bill.
What?
And then, and then we will, we will be.
April, May. It'll be, yeah, finally. And, and, and let me explain the, the other part, that a lot of, maybe our audience don't understand either. So, when, when somebody, if, if somebody comes in and rents, okay? When, when somebody, if, if somebody comes in and rents, okay? The renters come in, they don't get a bill for two months. Let's say unfortunate things happen, just they pan out and they leave, okay? We typically are never, never getting all of our money.
Yeah.
So, this is also gonna help the long-term. Of, of renters. Now, we always wanna find a renter, we always want good people to come to the community, uh, but we've gotta be responsible to how we're operating that also.
Is this new? Is this new? Billing implementation derived from your software?
Correct.
We had a, what, twenty weeks.
And the nice thing about this, guys, there's gonna be some we have to go out to, there's always going to be some, for some reason, we have to go figure out why it's, it's not si, sending a signal for one reason or no. But, those are gonna be very few of our twenty. So, when we read a meter, we can go back, and it's always, it's sending that at least once a day, I think it's twice a day. It's reading, it's sending data. So, we don't have to go read a meter physically anymore to get the data for that day. It sits in the cloud, we already have it. Now, we get a report that says, hey, we have not got data from that customer this many days. So, we can go look at that one customer and figure out why have we not got data from that one customer? Now, we do have probably fifteen-ish that we're, we're working on still, through the new implementation of, of the new meters. We're working through those. But, this is gonna be a lot less manpower, a lot more efficiency, everybody's gonna be able to see when their water usage, uh, took place. I downloaded mine, and I noticed that somebody turned my water on to water some trees, and it stayed on for twenty-four hours, and I used like, uh, twelve thousand gallons. And, uh, so they don't see that on, on that app. So it tells you, it reminds you. Now, keep in mind, before, you're having to remember what you did two months ago. Sometimes, that's terrible what I did yesterday. But two months ago, you're really gonna remember that tree that somebody came and turned water on and, and think it's funny and other stuff, I'll mention my name.
Yeah.
It's hard.
You remember that.
Okay, what do we need here? So, uh, I have a question though, right quick. This is gonna be the regular price from now on, or this is just a price for two months?
For one month.
Billing. That's what I get, that, so as of June twenty-fifth, it'll be back to your normal ninety-eight seventy-eight unless you go over.
Yeah, that's just for the two months to get it caught up.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. That's it combined.
Which, as you see, it's a huge.
Yes, I understand now.
We, we, we went a long way to meet the rhythm.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so, I do understand now.
Okay, so, um, so. Can I get a motion to change the, um, the billing for the next two months as we have discussed and been presented?
I have a motion.
I got a motion, do I have a second? You got a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Will you, Glenda? Aye. Okay, any opposed, nay? Alright, the ayes have it.
Will there be something, or could there be something on the customer's billing?
Yeah.
That tells them.
Yeah.
What's just been.
Makes it clear.
Tracy will add a note to the bill. It'll be sent out, we'll send out an alert. We're getting more and more people that are signing up for that, and I hope everybody signs up for that, they get so much good information from that. But, uh, we'll send out an alert also, and we'll put it on our, uh, our page.
I think it's, it's really good, I think it gets everybody on the same page. That's fine.
Got you, yep. Alrighty. Other than that, um. A few things, a few things that's going on, so hopefully everybody's seen our fire department is getting fixed back up. We're really close on being able to get some trucks back in there, I am going to work on, uh, getting a bid for, to fix that concrete that's in there. And, um. I'm not sure if you guys have walked in there lately, but I'm thinking it's probably gonna be. Rough neighborhood at twenty-five to thirty thousand, and then at that point, that'll be a good, a good place for, for that building, because as of right now, I mean, they're spending a hundred and. Thirty, a hundred and forty thousand for this roof and repair of the building. They're getting, uh, twenty-something new rafters, uh, they just fixed the exterior. Now, the crazy thing about it, the insurance is not paying to match the paint. They matched the paint as well as possible, so we do need to think about painting that type of building, which we're gonna, when we do the city, I would, I would propose us to match the two. But, uh, shoot, that building's never looked as good as those, wow. So all that brick up there that's back, back on and attached, and this roof is gonna be, uh, top-of-line, top-technology roof. So we'll be in good shape here, so I do think, uh, we need to consider the fixing that concrete and, uh, make it a long-term backup. After all the money to spend on it now. Sirens. You know, this was an initiative that Ms. Glenda, uh, pushed, um, or requested, should I say, and, uh, now we're to the point, next Thursday, we will be, we are scheduled to do multiple. Testing from twelve o'clock to five PM. So we have put that out on our page, so, uh, we have. We have announced that with alerts out, so everybody knows that's coming. He was in again, he was in town again today, doing some more, uh. Programming, but this will be, again, top-of-line technology, and that might not be top-of-line sirens, because we are utilizing some old sirens, we, we kind of. Refurbished one that looks really, really good, but, uh, we'll continue to look at getting new sirens through some grants, uh, to upgrade those, but this will have technology that we'll be able to operate off of, off of cellular device. So no longer will we have to worry about making it to City Hall, open it up, get in there, push a button, we'll be able to do it also, off of it. Really excited about that. Uh, and. Said out to Mr. Beto, he, he, uh, he did a little bit requesting the information on that too, um, so. He's a really good, um, citizen that's always been involved, so we appreciate him. Sharing his opinions on that also. Okay, other than that, uh, I think I covered everything. Yep, it looks like I covered everything. Uh, so, at this point, we'll, um. I'll take a motion to, well, if.
Anything for the next agenda?
Uh, again, I'm gonna look at the, uh, at concrete for the fire department, anything else?
Are we still fixing the streets?
Yes. And now that we have an extra person, we'll go get back on that, matter of fact, the guy, uh, called me about a week ago, see if we need any more material, and he'll be called back in a couple of weeks, because we're gonna be starting back on that now. Picking up a few things, but yes, ma'am.
Where are we with tech, not fixing the other street?
I mean, I haven't talked to him lately, but what I mentioned is gonna start in August.
Right way to school.
And they said that's just terrible timing, but that's just where it's, like, coming out. That's gonna be exciting, that's gonna be some really good upgrades for no money out of our pocket. Anything else? Alrighty, if there's nothing else, then yeah, if you ever think of something, and, uh, feel free to give me a call, we'll go over it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Thank you. You got a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Before you leave, one of the reasons I, I love to represent small cities, the ones I have are really great. This is, what we, I've just watched tonight. Is the best evidence of democracy in action. Local citizens determining their own. Wellbeings and their own policies, and you are policy, but that's what council members do, right policy. But. It's really good to see what you all have accomplished and what you are trying to accomplish. And, uh. It does, it does be good, and I think it's America, whatever that means.
Thank you.
And the good, the fact that there's an open exchange between, and that you don't do it with clubs and sticks and guns and, you know, it's really good.
Sure.
Good work.
Is the next one, is the next meeting in fifteen?
No, it's, it's, uh, third Tuesday. So, yeah.
When is the next meeting, did you say?
Seven fifteen. There, chief. You tapping the minutes up?
Thanks for two years, less ordered by a court of competition, our son authorized person has to see authorized people with the temporary account.
Thank you.